The Monday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, regular meeting of the Gardner City Council will come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone. Counsel Bujo. Counsel Craig Cormier.
Present.
Counsel Rana Cormier.
Present.
Counsel General Lawitz.
Present.
Counsel Hardern.
Present.
Counsel Heath.
Present.
Counsel Matt.
Present.
Counsel Tyro. Counsel Walsh.
Present.
And President Kuzinskas.
Present. Please rise to recite the opening prayer and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Almighty God, we thank you for bringing us together this evening, inspire us toward the deeds and sound decisions, and direct us toward the attainment of the good city government. We pray thee to bless and protect all the people of our city, and to so guide and inspire us that we may be the great Indian Army. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as one of open meeting recordings, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes pursuant to General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty. Is anyone here recording tonight's meeting? There are, there is no reading of minutes of prior meetings. There are no public hearings, communications from the mayor, appointments. Item number one zero seven eight eight, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Chuck LaHaye to the position of historical commission member for term expiring September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Counsel Matt.
Madam President, I make a motion to refer this to the appointments committee.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Matt, seconded by Counsel Walsh to refer the item to the appointments committee. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item one zero seven eight nine, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Scott Huntun to the position of historical commission member for term expiring September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Counsel Matt.
Madam President, I make a motion that we refer this to the appointments committee.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Matt, seconded by Counsel Walsh to refer the item to the appointments committee. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item one zero seven nine zero, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Alana Tumi to the position of historical commission member for term expiring September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Counsel Matt.
I would also like to make a motion to refer this appointment to the appointments committee.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Matt, seconded by Counsel Walsh to refer the item to the appointments committee. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item one zero seven nine one, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Chris Para to the position of historical commission member for term expiring September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Counsel Matt.
I'd like to make a motion to refer this item to the appointments committee.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Matt, seconded by Counsel Walsh to refer the item to the appointments committee. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Orders, item number one zero seven nine two, an order authorizing one thousand ninety-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents payment of prior year airport operating expenditure report from the Finance Committee. Counsel Ron Cormier.
This one is accrued by the Airport Commission. There's a variety of items they needed to operate down there. As we can see, and as this happened with other departments, these bills come in late. It does require a nine-tenths vote of the council. Finance Committee recommends passage, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel General Lawitz to authorize the payment. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Walsh.
Point of order, Madam President. Does it require nine-tenths of the council, nine-tenths of those present?
It's nine-tenths of those present. There will be a roll call vote on the motion. Is there further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Craig Cormier.
Yes.
Counsel Rana Cormier.
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz.
Yes.
Counsel Hardern.
Yes.
Counsel Heath.
Yes.
Counsel Matt.
Yes.
Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. A E A's motion passes. Item one zero seven nine three, an order authorizing thirty-two dollars and one cent payment of prior year I T operating expenditure report from the Finance Committee. Counsel Ron Cormier.
This again requires a nine-tenths vote. It's a bill that was received late. The Finance Committee is favorable, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel General Lawitz to authorize payment. Is there discussion on the motion? Again, this is nine-tenths vote of those present. This will be a roll call vote. If there's no discussion, the clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Craig Cormier.
Yes.
Counsel Rana Cormier.
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz.
Yes.
Counsel Hardern.
Yes.
Counsel Heath.
Yes.
Counsel Matt.
Yes.
Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. A E A's motion passes. Communications, item one zero seven nine four, a measure authorizing acceptance of donations and gifts for use by park bandstands. I will be abstaining from this vote. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel General Lawitz.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a donation from the family of Hugh and Gladys Hunter to their daughter Victoria Kuzinskas. She has donated, or the family is donating sixteen hundred dollars for a memorial bench in Monument Park. Both Mr. and Mrs. Hunter were active members of the Gardner community, owning Hunter Farm Ice Cream Stand on Chapel Street, and Mr. Hunter also served on this council. The Hunters enjoyed the summer concert series in the park, and their family wishes to honor them via this donation. Finance Committee was in favor, and I move to accept the donation.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to accept the donation. Is there discussion on the motion? Well said, Counsel General Lawitz. Seeing there is no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those saying, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item one zero seven nine five, a measure declaring surplus for purpose of disposal of land and buildings at four seventy-eight Chestnut Street. Counsel General Lawitz.
Thank you, Madam President. Mass Land Corps foreclosed on the tax title lien for the property as stated at four seventy-eight Chestnut Street. Mayor has recommended we set the minimum price for sale at the taxes owed of forty-two thousand dollars instead of the, instead of normal course of getting a formal appraisal or using the assessed value. Reason being, there's currently two tenants in the property. This price, setting this price will help avoid city being, taking on the legal responsibilities of being a landlord and get the property back on the tax rolls as soon as possible. Finance Committee was in unanimous agreement, and I move the order declaring the property surplus.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Ron Cormier to declare the property surplus and approve it. Is there discussion on the motion? This requires a two-thirds vote, and it is a roll call vote. There is no discussion. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Craig Cormier.
Yes.
Counsel Rana Cormier.
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz.
Yes.
Counsel Hardern.
Yes.
Counsel Heath.
Yes.
Counsel Matt.
Yes.
Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. A E A's motion passes. Item one zero seven nine six, a measure authorizing acceptance of donation and gifts for use by Gardner Police K nine program. Counsel General Lawitz.
I move to accept the donation from Tenderheart Veterinary Care to the Gardner Police K nine program.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to accept the donations. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel General Lawitz.
I just wanted to say while this item has not, had not been referred to the Finance Committee, it doesn't seem necessary to refer a donation like this. Tenderheart has generously agreed to waive all fees for Rocky's checkups, the K nine dogs' checkups, and other office visits. They have also offered treatment surgeries and other procedures at a thirty percent discount. Police Chief McAvine's letter thanks Tenderheart and their owner, Dr. Jennifer Wood, for this gift, and I'd like to thank her as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Petitions, applications, communications, et cetera, item one zero seven nine seven, a notification from Fire Chief Gregory Lagoy regarding appointment certificates filed for Benjamin Tucker and Brendan Byrne. Is there a motion?
Motion placed on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel, motion made by Counsel General Lawitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to place the notification on file. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. At this time, we will take a brief recess of the meeting to swear in those who have been appointed here this evening, and we will reconvene after the swearing-in is completed and call the meeting back to order at that time. So we have Benjamin and Brendan. You're up.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Benjamin Tucker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of firefighter.
Perform the duties of firefighter.
According to the law and the best of my abilities.
According to the law and the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. Okay, you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Brendan Byrne.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of firefighter.
Perform the duties of firefighter.
According to the law and the best of my abilities.
According to the law and to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
The meeting is now called back to order. Item number one zero seven nine eight, a petition submitted by Private Oversight LLC for an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter six seventy-five, entitled Zoning, Per Zoning Act, M G, Mass General Law, forty A. Is there a motion? Counsel General Lawitz.
Thank you. I move to refer this item to the planning board.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawitz, seconded by Counsel Heath to refer the item to the planning board. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Reports of standing committees, Finance Committee, item one zero seven eight two, a measure authorizing an increase in allowable funding limit for council on aging revolving fund. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel Ron Cormier.
Finance Committee was favored. We've received a letter from the, the director of the Senior Center. They have been fortunate in receiving funds and gifts, and they'd like to increase the cap amount to the forty thousand that Mass General Law allows, so to be able to save for larger purchases. Right now, they're kind of limited when it's capped at twenty thousand. Again, these are all funds that are supervised by the auditing department. We were in favor of this, and I move the, that we pass the measure authorizing setting to read.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel General Lawitz to authorize the increase. Is there discussion on the motion? This does require two-thirds vote, and it is a roll call vote. Any discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Craig Cormier.
Yes.
Counsel Rana Cormier.
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz.
Yes.
Counsel Hardern.
Yes.
Counsel Heath.
Yes.
Counsel Matt.
Yes.
Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
President Kuzinskas.
Yes. A E A's motion passes. Appointments, item one zero seven seven zero, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Francis Lemieux to the position of cultural council member for term expiring August thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Counsel Walsh.
Yes, the Appointments Committee has not met on this, the, in the absence of Chairman Tyros. It was his intent to, because he knew that there were new appointments coming on, that were just referred tonight to the Appointments Committee, to combine it, the ones referred along with the new ones, to a, Appointments Committee meeting that will occur prior to our, hopefully prior to our next meeting. So the committee requests more time.
There is no objection. The committee will be granted more time.
And if I may, Madam President, that will be the same for one zero seven seven one, one zero seven seven two, and one zero seven seven three.
There is no objection. One zero seven seven one, one zero seven seven two, and one zero seven seven three will be granted more time by the Appointments Committee. Committee will be granted more time on those items as well. Public Safety Committee, item one zero seven eight four, an application by Gardner Tenpence Incorporated located at five sixty West Broadway for a bowling alley license. Counsel Craig Cormier.
Yes, unfortunately, we had to cancel our meeting last minute last week. We hope to meet again next week. Therefore, for items one zero seven eight four and one zero seven eight five, please counsel ask for more time.
If there is no objection, item one zero seven eight four and item one zero seven eight five will be granted more time to the Public Safety Committee. The committee will be granted more time. Public Service Committee, item number one zero seven four zero, a petition by National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, Keys Road, to relocate one jointly owned pole on Keys Road beginning at a point approximately seven hundred feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of West Street. Relocate pole number two across the street to accommodate for bridge construction, upgrade to a forty-five foot class two. There was a public hearing on this item. The committee had been granted more time to get more information. Counsel Walsh.
Yes, the committee did meet on this again. There was some confusion and some miscommunication with National Grid and Ty and Bond, the engineer that did the original plans for this. That confusion has been resolved. The plan that's in the materials is the correct one. The committee did consider this at our last meeting, voted to recommend passage of the petition, and I move it.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel General Lawitz to grant the passage of the petition. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Unfinished business and matters for reconsideration, item one zero seven seven nine, a notification from the mayor regarding the fire department operations audit. Is there a motion? Counselor Craig Cormier.
Move to place the item on file.
Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to place a notification on file. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Walsh.
Yes, as I mentioned during the course of the informal meeting, I thought that the report, the audit report was thorough, comprehensive, included a thoughtful analysis of the data. That's helpful for us to understand. There are a number of recommendations that are made regarding a variety of the different topics that were covered by the audit, and I look forward to hearing from the mayor as to what elements of the recommendation he intends to implement. So I plan to support the motion.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counsel Ron Cormier.
I was gratified to see that a number of us were around on the fire department and initiated the ambulance service, and although we were skeptical, we were afraid that it might not be as successful as, as they predicted it would be. I have to say, that's one of the things that the audit gave us information on, is how successful it has been, both on a financial basis, but also on a support basis for our citizenry. As the chief was pointing out, the Counsel Walsh and I, in a smaller community such as this, the friendly faces that appear, the, the constant of the fire department appearing with some of these of our citizens that may need their services more than once a year, is a, is a bonus, if you will. So we're happy to see this. And I was also happy to see that the audit covered far more than just the ambulance service. It really was a comprehensive look at our entire fire department and some of the goals that we should be looking at, to improve an already well-run service. So I'm very much in favor of it and grateful for it.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counsel Walsh.
One other thing for the second time that I intended to mention is that I'm not sure how wise it will be to, to rely heavily on the Medicare reimbursement, Medicare reimbursement component that's received from the state government. That's subject to appropriation on an annual basis and subject to elimination of the program itself. So to, to, to the extent that we rely on that, I think we might be on shaky footing.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? The motion to place the item on file, is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item one zero seven eight one, an act relative to establish a special act charter drafting committee. We have scheduled an informal meeting on this item to be held Monday, October third, at six forty-five before our next regular meeting. So the item will remain on the calendar at this time, and we'll have more time on it unless there is an objection to that. Okay, the item will remain on the calendar. Moving into new business, Counsel Heath.
Yes, Madam President. I actually wrote something up here. One second. Normally, I don't do this. Anyhow, yes, I would like to invite the greater Gardner community to the fabulous Fall Festival this Saturday, which takes place, the return of the chair luge with Counselor Bujo, who's not here, who's been talking a lot of trash. Also, this Sunday is Price Chopper's tenth birthday. There's going to be a lot of giveaways, raffles, gift cards, and more. That's between the hours of eleven and two. Other than that, that's it, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel General Lawitz.
Nothing this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Matt.
I just want to say, and I hope not only with the council but with the citizens, it hasn't gotten unnoticed, the amount of donations we've had in our last couple of months on our agenda, whether it be to the senior center, the animal shelter, the veterans department, to Rocky, the summer rec department camps, you know, all of these important departments and programs we have, and I just want to say, you know, that it's so appreciative, it's so nice to see, and, and I hope to see them continue in the future, but it's really, it's great that they've been so in the forefront of our agenda lately. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Craig Cormier.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Hardern.
Nothing this week, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Walsh.
Yes, Madam President. When I read the fire department audit report, it was, interested me that the element show, that part of it showing that the plan is to buy a new ambulance with ARPA funds prompted me to think about how those ARPA funds are being used and expended here by the city, because they're funds that are distributed by the state, funded by the federal government, but they are not subject for appropriation by the city council, unlike other elements of our budget. So it occurred to me that we should have an idea of where those funds are being spent, and then shortly thereafter, I received a bulletin from the Department of Local Services of the Mass Department of Revenue indicating, just the element, what portions of the ARPA funds, the Corona virus local fiscal recovery fund allocation by municipality was included in a D L S bulletin that came out recently, and it appears that for the two, two allocations that have, that have been made, the City of Gardner has received just, just under six point two million dollars. And we know that close to three hundred thousand is being used to pay for a new ambulance, but I'm very curious to know how the rest of it is being spent, either has been spent or is allocated to being spent. The mayor, I think, suggested that there are plans to do that, but I look forward to receiving it and knowing how, even though the council isn't involved with the process, we should certainly be aware of how it is being expended. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Ron Cormier.
I have nothing this evening.
Sure. Counsel Ron Cormier.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Mayor Nicholson.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to respond to that, I do plan on submitting a full report to the city council. I actually plan to do that next meeting, but with that, I'll also be sending a special report to the city council. By federal law, we're required every so often to do a special audit of all of the federal grant funding that we've received, and we just got that back today with a perfect score that we received for an audit for a second year in a row. So we'll be receiving, sending that off to the city council if we receive for the seven point seven million dollars, aside from the six point one million dollars that we received from just the American Rescue Plan. I did notify the council in June of the funding for the new ambulance in a correspondence that was placed on file about using the ARPA funds for that, but there's a lot more that it's gone into. We have about a million dollars of unobligated ARPA funds left in this tranche that we've received, and there's other planning that we have going forward too, so I plan to share my full plan along with what we've expended already and what the remaining balance is after all of that with the council in the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. And I have no new business this evening. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn on the floor. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn on the floor after the closing prayer. Motion made, uh, motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counselor Mack. Is there discussion? I mean, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes.
Almighty Father, who sees over all, as we adjourn, we thank thee for the opportunity of drawing deliberation and actual understanding of the course of this meeting. Bless the Lord, all who stand here and the people who represent us, we are, and do thou attend to our common welfare until our next meeting. Amen.